Okay, I will open the public meeting at 5:07 PM with a call to order. Public comment. Is there any public comment online? No public comment here.
No public comment.
Ah, team resources. Policy. Okay. Any response? None? Done. Approval of minutes for October 4th. Fine by me. They look fine by me. Thank you, Tricia. Those are good. Okay, we move on to 4.1, discussion items. Are there discussion items other than these two? Oh, 4.1 policy, 6150 budget transfers. We're looking at an update.
I am so excited to kick off the 6,000 series with all of you. I am, it's amazing. This is gonna be really great work.
I'm her hype person over here.
Yay, let's do it.
Let's do our 6,000 series.
With a real crowd pleaser. For transfer.
Take it away, Amanda.
I mean, it's really very simple. Thank you, Tricia, for actually printing it the way that you did with actually the corrections of sort of like what was in the policy. You're gonna see that this one, I actually updated some language. I did. I'm proposing that we actually increase the amount of the transfers that would actually need to be discussed in a board forum. Because if you haven't noticed, things, costs have gone up, things have gone up. And I really feel like we're living in a world where, you know, the 2,000 limit or the 5,000 limit may not actually be where we need to be anymore. Just today, I will tell you, although it's not related to budget transfer, but there was a request around equipment, which we locally set as well. Right now, it's currently set at $500. That means any one item over $500, we actually have to put in the district budget. And I think we could probably increase that.
Wow.
So that'll be coming. But this one is one of those examples, right? So I don't know if the board really wants to see every single transfer that occurs over a, you know, a certain amount. Those budget transfers are any, every single time there's a budget transfer, we still actually use a triplicate form. Those are tracked and filed. And then those triplicate forms get, essentially there's redundancy in the wing cap system, which is our financial management software system. They are cataloged. When I print a budget report, you can actually see the original budget, the transfer amount into that budget code, right? And then the new budget amount line. We can print a, any term that you want, the transfers that occurred during that term. The software does that for us. So again, I think, I think the intention around this is to really have accountability and transparency. We have that. I think that the threshold needs to just be brought up to current.
So what is the current threshold?
I, I wanna, there's a 2,000, Tricia. I, I'm surprised that it actually didn't. Thank you, everybody. Sorry, I shouldn't.
Well, I remember that we.
Is it the 10,000? Any transfers were to see 10,000?
Yes, two, number two.
Yes.
What was the original amount there is the question.
Three.
Three, okay, so three, I said two.
3,000, so there you go.
We see that in the consent agenda often.
That's right, you see the totals in all the lists.
Right.
Right, that's right.
And, and those items on the consent agenda are discussed or at least looked at by the finance committee.
Finance. Correct.
Has, has there been discussion with the finance committee about raising the transfer cap?
Um, I did not get this policy approved in advance of bringing it here with the finance committee.
Oh, I was just wondering if, if, if they had, not getting the policy approved, but if people had said gee, we're, we have to authorize a heck of a lot of transfers.
No. No.
I think it's simply because inflation and the cost of things since 2007 is just.
I wanna, I wanna be really clear, this one, this one would need like, any, the way it's written right now,
It's been a critical time. That's the last time we've done this.
All transfers are still part of the consent agenda. At this moment in time, anything over 3,000 has to be brought to attention of the board. That's essentially what this policy is saying.
Ah.
I'm asking that anything over 10,000, although it's still part of the consideration of accounts, 10,000 we would discuss, right? If there was something larger than that, I would bring that to attention.
And, and as Lily said, this policy hasn't been updated since 2007,
Okay.
which by my reckoning is 15 years ago. So, 3,000.
That's a pad.
You bet, you bet. I, I've been calculating. So, I would, I would have to guess that $10,000 in today's money is for the moment roughly equivalent to 3,000, if not less. And I would certainly approve sending this policy for, forward for first read.
Yeah.
Great.
And if anybody on finance would like to tinker with the, the amount, we could take an amendment to that.
Well, what I would like to propose is that finance committee is always two weeks after policy. And so what I can start to do now that we're looking at the 6,000 series is at least have a note on the agenda for finance committee of the policies that we reviewed here, so that finance committee gets an opportunity to just build awareness of sort of what we're, what we're going through.
Well, this month, it's gonna be three weeks from tonight because we don't meet next week.
Right, uh, or that's my Thursday.
We do meet next week, we don't meet the following week. Three weeks, so November 8th we meet.
November 8th is election day.
Oh, that's election day.
So we, we've modified the meeting calendar.
Yes, sorry, 15th.
Yes.
Yep, 15th and 17th, my apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all right. So, if you, if you want this sooner rather than later.
There is no pressing.
There's no hurry.
There is, I don't feel that there is urgency around the 6,000 series. So we definitely can take our time and do these really well. I was thinking maybe two a meeting.
Okay.
Again, they're super exciting. We don't want anybody to get, you know.
Okay. And then you're looking for changes to the language, board president or acting president would change to chief operations officer is empowered to authorize the emergency transfer and will notify the board president of such action rather than the full board.
That is, so that aligns sort of with what we're doing with the capital project, right? There's thresholds of authority. And so, you know, putting that on the district staff person who, you know, then would alert the board president versus the board president authorizing that initially. I, I, that was just a suggestion for us, just again, as operations have changed and we sort of.
That is, this is a trust of emergency transfers only.
Or.
That's right, that's right. And I think, actually, I'm very happy to authorize the chief operations officer rather than have to get the board president to do things like that.
Yes. And then all transfers regardless of amount can be made available on request?
Right.
And again, that's because we have software that we click a button, we can pull a report, right? A foil comes in, Dan Bryan contacts us, we can have that ready. You know, we can maintain a binder still in the office, that's not a problem. But just trying to get away from paper and use technology a little better, I think that's probably, again, just keeping up with the times.
Okay, so should we, let's put this on the agenda for first reading on that. Or because finance will not admit?
Finance will not admit. I'm, I'm, since Amanda says it's not urgent, I, I would like the input of finance on the actual amount that they feel comfortable. Maybe they'll give you a higher threshold. I don't know what finance will do because I never go there. Okay, so we have attended the policy 6150 budget transfer. We have, we have a clear plan of action. Amanda will bring this to finance. And could we say, following the approval of finance, we could put it on the agenda for the next board meeting, which would be on the 22nd?
29th.
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 29th. Right. 15th board meeting, 22nd, 29th. Okay, moving on to policy 6240, item 4.2, investment policy and procedures.
That's right, so this one has a policy. And then there is a lengthy procedural manual or document that goes along with this. This, I actually sent off to our investment consulting group, 3+1. Alex DeRosa is our consultant for 3+1. He attends finance committees rather regularly, I'd say like twice a year at least. He sends us quarterly reports around the way that we manage our investments. And so he works with municipalities, government entities, school districts, all over. And so he really guided us with the language around this and sort of made alignments to current laws. There were, we were actually out of alignment in a few places. And then suggestions for language that allow us the flexibility to be able to invest funds, obviously all via general municipal law guidance. And with the ability to sort of, you know, move things from, let's say it was NY class over to Tompkins Trust, over to right depending on the market factors at that time, so. Okay.
I'm just going to note for public information that this policy was last revised in 1994.
Could you reckon?
I must cipher. Okay, that would be 28 years ago. Um, so it's a very simple policy.
Yes.
Acknowledging that the preservation of capital takes precedence over return on investment.
That's right.
Is desirous of generating the best possible return on public funds that are on hands but not, on hand but not immediately needed to meet the obligations of the district. So you will not be latching a lot of risky stocks.
We will not, and we will not lock ourselves into obligations that we could not make payroll. Right, so there's a, this really speaks to thinking long-term, but also about cash flow, month to month. And as many of you know, if you do attend finance, that the August books looks very different from the November books, right? In terms of after when we get our tax levy amounts. So there is really.
Oh, shoot.
Taxes.
I think I wrote out the check, it sat there all day and I didn't pay it yesterday.
Moira. Uh, we can talk about taxes.
2% for you, ICST.
What Moira is referring to is that the, October 1st through the 31st was the first month of non-penalty collections for your school tax bills, which are available online and that you received in the mail and that you could call our office and we can get them to you. The next period opens November 1st, which is today. And unfortunately, that does have a penalty period of 2% on your tax bill. It will be listed on your tax bill. The second penalty period runs through the end of November. So we wanna, we are, if it was postmarked on the 31st of October and we receive it three days from now, that is still within the first collection period. But if it is not postmarked by the 31st, unfortunately, it will be considered in the late period. And even Moira Lang doesn't get any kind of exemption from New York State tax law. The school district does not have any power when it comes to school taxes.
Except for setting the levy. Well, that was awkward.
So, Moira, I found it educational and also compelling. It's that. I play sad.
Compelling it's that as well, and I'm so sorry. I can help you.
Okay, well, let's, coming back to our investment policy.
Yes.
The wording that is changing in the policy is we are replacing the procedures manual regarding investment, which sets forth specific criteria for investments with policy 6240 procedures. So, so we no longer have a manual. And then, so these, these will be a set of procedures that is attached to this very simple and concise policy.
Right, and I'm wondering actually, I think that this, I actually need to make another correction here. So I think it should say as outlined in, not policy, because this is the policy, right? So as outlined in 6240P.
6240.
Dash, procedures regarding investment, right? So that's the title that we have of the next piece. Procedures regarding investment, which sets forth specific criteria for ICST, or for investment.
Okay. So shall we walk through these?
I'm just curious to, uh, on hand is shaded, did somebody think that that was for some program?
I think it was probably from Google Doc.
Yeah.
Um, and I, it might have been that, I was trying to think of a better way to say it. Um, but I, you know?
Yeah, it is.
I think it's okay.
Okay. And monies, I actually took note of that and I looked up monies spelled this way versus monies IES. And I discovered that even, monies IES is now in, in greater use than this. But certain usage maidens don't like monies with the IES because it doesn't follow the rule and how you make plurals. But also because it would lead people to mispronounce it like ponies or cronies.
It would be monies.
It would be moanies, so.
I would, I, I vote to leave it as monies, as you know, on a traditional.
Yes.
Right, these monies.
Yes. Okay, I just thought I'd share with you when I learned about.
Letters.
Yes.
Interesting, so, and, and we'll be using the phrase monies multiple times.
Right.
Thank you for looking at that.
Right.
I'm, I'm actually a little shocked that IES is in use at all because EYS, EY because you just add an S.
Right, I know.
Okay, all monies and other financial resources available for investment on its own behalf or on behalf of any other entity or individual. So the primary objectives of the district's investment activities are, in order of priority, to conform with all applicable federal, state, and other
legal requirements.
Legally requirements.
What is this in, what is that in the parentheses?
So in the current policy, after each one of these little hash marks, there is a, I guess, a key word in a, in the parents that says, one of them says legality, one says safety, one says liquidity, and one says yields. So what we could do is actually start with that and have that as the capital, like legality. And then it says to conform with all applicable federal rights, reverse it, as opposed to putting in the parentheses afterward.
I like that, I, that makes it more clear.
I like that. Because I wonder when I read this, what, what are these paragraphs?
So if, if that is, if that is a legally mandated order of priority, then I would like to have that highlighted at the beginning of each sentence, at the beginning of each bullet point.
Right. Yep. I think that actually for a reader, that is kinder. And again, sometimes while I'm doing this, it's happening in my time, so it's.
Sure.
And then are you adding, um, uh?
No, this picked up somehow my editing. I don't know why. It picked up a lot of the messy editing, so. No, I'm not adding to obtain a reasonable, that goes down. But I am adding to appropriately meet these objectives, the district will make investment decisions based on categories of cash. That, that sentence I am adding.
Okay, so you, you're, you are just changing the formatting of this from using semicolon, or from using colons to bulleted point, basically bulleted points, but we're highlighting legality, safety, liquidity, and yield.
Correct.
And then to appropriately, appropriately meet these objectives, the district will make investment decisions based on categories of cash with which the time horizon is continually calculated using a liquidity analysis of past and anticipated future financial requirements.
Correct.
And you have been doing that.
We have.
For years.
That is correct. And the, and almost all of the quarterly, no, actually, all of the quarterly reports from 3+1 are available online as parts of the finance agendas and minutes.
And is this 3+1 doing the calculating for us?
It's in, in collaboration with the treasurer, right? So in a school district office, the treasurer is almost always the one that is involved with revenues coming in and the investment of those revenues and the banking, okay, side of the operations. So Emily, we have specific computers with certain passwords that are locked, like we have, right? There's very, there's regulations around management when it comes to banking and investment. So Emily is doing that. She's our treasurer with the 3+1 as a consultant.
Okay, thank you. I am pleased with these edits.
Sure.
All right, delegation of authority. We are replacing governing board with chief operations officer. The chief operations officer maintains responsibility for the administration of the investment program and shall establish written procedures for the operation of the investment program consistent with these investment policies. So these are not guidelines, these are being changed to policy. Is there any impact to the chief, taking out delegation of anything to the chief fiscal officer? Or the chief operations officer now just be overarching and.
That's, that is my title, is chief operations officer.
Okay.
I think it's broader, right? Finance is part of that.
Okay.
I, we can, if I change my title, we can change this. And essentially, if you see here, I eliminated the governing board because you were delegating it to the person anyway.
Anyway, yeah, yes.
So I was just like, right, this policy will bypass the announcement that the policy doesn't.
Yeah.
Right, so.
It's like, catch it and we can.
Yep.
That's right, that's right. Happy to take the ball around here, that's right.
Okay.
No, I do, I wanted to, I mean, that's what I have.
That's mine.
I mean, or school business executive, I mean, you could call, that's, that's my, there's a civil service title and then there's more of like the title in the organization.
Oh, so it's, it used to read, the governing board's responsibility for the administration of the investment program is delegated to.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just, okay, so we are just, the chief operations officer maintains responsibility. Okay, so we're eliminating caps and voice.
That's right.
We are establishing clear lines of control. Okay, such procedures shall include internal controls to provide a satisfactory level of accountability based upon records incorporating the description and amount, amounts of investment, the funds for which they are held, the places where kept and other relevant information, including dates of sale or other dispositions and amounts realized. In addition, the internal control procedures shall describe the responsibilities and levels of authority for key individuals involved in the investment program.
This is really your treasurer's report. Right?
Right.
So we do this already. And that's sort of where, that outline of what that would look like, right? And then also then couple that with the 3+1 report, that's sort of describing that.
I can, I see no changes, additions, deletions. I think it's very straightforward. Prudence. All participants in the investment process shall seek to act responsibly as custodians of the public trust and shall avoid any transaction that might impair public confidence in the district to govern effectively.
So throughout the document, I eliminated Ithaca City School and just called us the district because it is our policy. I thought there was a redundancy there, that was unnecessary.
Investments shall be made with prudence, diligence, skill, judgment, and care under circumstances then prevailing, which knowledgeable and prudent persons in like capacity would use, not for speculation but for investment considering the safety of the principal as well as the probable income to be derived. All participants involved in the investment process shall refrain from personal business activity that could conflict with the proper execution of the investment program or which could impair their ability to make impartial investment decisions.
So there's a lot of redundant prudence. You can pick another word.
Yeah.
Right, I, obviously, what you're, what you're talking about here is ethics, ethics, right? And, and ability to research. And acknowledgement that the outcome is about security, right?
Yes.
That's really what this is about.
Other, other than the title of the section, we are only using the word prudence twice.
Prudence and prudent, that's it.
And where's the part of prudence?
Prudence, diligence, skill, knowledgeable, and prudent persons.
Oh, I see.
Is anyone else thinking of the first President Bush and Dana Carby playing them on Saturday Night Live?
No.
Would it be prudent?
Oh.
That was a long time ago, people.
Can we, should we just get rid of the first prudence?
Made with diligence.
Scale, judgment, and care.
Yeah, but it's called prudence, so.
Well, and then it says which knowledgeable and prudent persons.
But we want. But we want the, we want the investments to be made by prudent.
Okay.
Knowledgeable and, I'm just knowledgeable.
Yeah, we could do that too, missing, get rid of one of the prudences.
I'm wondering if, if this is a financial term that I'm not familiar with.
It is, it is, because I'm looking, right, so, I mean, I don't think we want to replace it with like frugal.
Yeah, no.
I mean cautious, discreet, that's really, right, judicious, like these are kinds of the.
Let's, let's just stick with prudence, um, pru. Yeah, it's only one repetition.
Yeah, that's okay.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna open up any kind of ruble room.
Yeah, I, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, diversification. It is the policy of the district to diversify its deposits and investments by financial institution, by investment instrument, and by maturity scheduling. The chief operations officer shall establish appropriate limits for the amount of investments which can be made with each financial institution or dealer and shall evaluate this listing at least annually.
Right, so.
That's added.
That is added, and in the past, there were actually like, in, as you'll see where I've actually crossed it out, there were like named banking institutions and limits. And I, I think as we move forward with the factors that we are hearing about and I'm trying to understand, and again, with this, with an consulting firm now that's supporting this, I really, I think Alex and I were both saying, you know, we can adopt the banking institutions in the annual meeting. That actually, we do that, right?
Right.
We actually say who we bank with.
Yes.
But your procedures, I don't know if you want that to be in your procedures. I think you want to be able to say that this is sort of stewarded by someone, right? And they have the ability to move these funds versus waiting for the board meeting to get the adoption of the banking facility, right? Like, I think that we can use the annual meeting in a little better way for those things.
Well, I agree, and are these also 1997 limits?
That, uh, that is correct.
So.
Yeah, we're talking 20 million, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think the most important thing, right, that, the, the last wording of the first sentence, the maturity scheduling, right? That is what we're tracking. There are things that are in three months, six months, 12 months, like, again, for cash flow purposes, for capital project purposes, that is the absolute art of this work. Is catching it when and then for how long, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And you've had a lot of practice on that and got it very good.
We've, we are, we are very fortunate to have found some just fantastic advisors and Emily. Emily puts the time and energy in every day. She's talking to Alex multiple times a week, which is great.
Great, okay. Internal controls. It is the policy of the district for all monies collected by any officer or employee of the government. To transfer these funds to the chief operations officer within five days of deposit. Or within the time period specified in law, whichever is shorter. Do you have comments on that?
So from three to five, this is one of those auditing functions where if we just gave ourselves two more days, sometimes if if there's a weekend or, right? I don't think anything's gonna happen within two days. Um we actually also Alex was saying that that's probably more common. Three days is is often very short timeframe. Five seems to be. Um based on some of the policies that he was recommending was the zone that we wanted to be in.
So all all monies collected by any officer, does that mean officer of the district?
That's correct.
And employees of the government, who does that refer to?
Employee of the government. I wonder. I mean, I'm just thinking right now because we're like in tax collection, I'm wondering if like the assessment office receives something, right? That might cover, they received a check, they work for a government entity. They would transfer it to us. If the city of Ithaca received payments of taxes, for example, right? And and were stewards, if I dropped off to them by accident or whatever, or maybe intentionally and it came to us. I would, I would imagine that's sort of what they're talking about. Um I can ask Alex though Pat for more clarification on that one.
Good, because it just says the government, we we might wanna change that to government employee?
Sure.
Internal controls.
Could be a grantor too.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, right, let me, a grantor, right? Uh so let me double check though what the intention is behind that.
Okay.
I will find that more.
I it's it's a little unclear to me that we certainly get many, many government funds.
Yep. Yep.
From different branches of different governments.
Okay.
The chief operations officer is responsible for establishing and maintaining. Internal control procedures to provide reasonable but not absolute insurance. That deposits and investments are safeguarded against loss from unauthorized use use or disposition. That transactions are executed in accordance with management's authorization. Properly recorded and managed in compliance with applicable laws and regulations. And this is just doing some minor vocabulary changes.
Mm-hmm.
We are, was this, were these the only two banks that were listed in?
That is correct.
That has to be wildly outdated.
That is correct.
Okay, that's gone.
So right, so we're getting rid of that entirely.
That's right.
Designation of depositories. And then, yes.
Okay, authorized financial institutions and dealers, this is what we are replacing this with?
This is new, yeah, this is a new approach.
Okay, the district shall maintain a list of financial institutions and dealers approved for investment purposes. The chief operations officer is responsible for evaluating the financial position and maintaining. A listing of proposed depositories, trading partners and custodians. The chief operations officer may use their discretion in selecting any allowable bank under New York general municipal law for investment purposes only. Up to a limit of twenty million dollars per bank unless otherwise noted in this policy. A report of such investments must be provided to the school board at the subsequent finance committee meeting. So this ba- bank can be added to the depository list.
Right, and so this is one where um I'd like to again circle that twenty million. Make sure finance committee is aware that we're setting this kind of limit. Make sure that they're okay with the depository list going through finance. Um so essentially, we're updating our annual policy, right, the annual meeting in July. Um and so this would be one that maybe we could also add for their review.
Yes, great, thank you.
I'm a little, so what is meant by the subsequent finance committee meeting? Subsequent to what?
To this meeting, the next time the finance committee meets.
No.
Right.
In the language?
Oh, 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 sorry.
A report of such investments must be provided to the school board at the subsequent finance. So essentially, what we're saying is that we can take action.
Uh-huh.
Then we would take it to finance to alert them in that report.
Alright.
Got it. At the next finance meeting after you make that profit. Investment collateral.
So.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
No, 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 so it's just that discretion piece, right?
Right.
Um of allowing that business office discretion.
You're right.
Collateralizing of deposits. All demand and time deposits of the entity in excess of the amount insured under the provisions of the Federal Deposit Insurance Act. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transaction accounts, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar time deba- deposits. Five hundred thousand dollar total coverage. Self shall be secured by eligible collateral consisting of any one or combination of the following. A pledge of eligible securities as provided in general municipal law, section ten, which is provided in appendix A.
And so.
I'm a little, what, what is the entity?
Yes.
Right, so that I did not catch.
Okay.
When I received the sample policy from Alex. In the sample policy, it said the entity and I changed each one to the district.
Oh, okay.
So I apologize, I did not catch that one.
Okay.
So that should be changed to the district.
Okay.
Okay, and then appendix A, right, although it's uh it's toward, there is an appendix here. And essentially, you'll have to go, I struck through it. I struck through uh B, but there's actually some um wording. That should is sort of listed under B there, which actually goes with appendix A, so there's some wording, there's some definitions. And then there's a chart.
Did I not get appendix A?
So it should, at the back of this paper copy.
I've seen a way.
I've had it on.
My hands with twelve authorized financial institutions and dealers.
Oh, that is not complete.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But then.
Yeah, not completely.
Appendix A and appendix B.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can skip ahead to appendix A or we can get to it when we get to it, just knowing like we can. Make a little star and know that it's coming back to this section eight.
You know, five, let me see if um. Okay.
I find the the formatting of this a little confusing. Okay. With colon, so these, you know, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty, five hundred total. Um I'm wondering if it could be in parentheses. You know, that's the definition of the provisions of the Federal Deposit Insurance Act. And then the sentence continues that that anything um in excess of those. Shall be secured by eligible collateral consisting of any one or combination of the following.
So essentially, we we state the provision, right? So that um all demand and time deposits of the district.
We say.
Will follow the provision of the Federal Deposit Insurance Act, yes?
And then you could put it in parentheses, what those are, yes.
Okay, will follow and then it goes here. Provision of it, okay, and then note it, note that underneath the second two fifty, there will be a line. So it looks like there's a plus, right, of two fifty, two fifty five hundred.
Right. Right, right, right. Right.
So there will actually be a line that will exist there.
Right.
So then that will happen there, right, Moira, and then you said, anything in excess of this amount shall be, right?
Yeah. Yes.
All the, all deposits in excess of this amount shall be secured by eligible collateral.
All deposits will be. Yeah.
Deposits, right. Shall be secured, got it, okay, great. So the other thing. And I don't know how we feel about uh appendices, right? I I mean, we can, we can include it right here in this section as opposed to having people. I don't know what like user ease we wanna have.
It reads pretty cozy.
It's. It's so great, it's really, really great, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So in in.
And oh, so X, appen- appendix A is being struck out?
No.
No.
Oh.
So you have to keep going.
Okay.
At the very bottom of where it says appendix B that's crossed out, it says appendix A.
That's right. Oh, again.
And then it comes to the next page.
Okay, so this becomes appendix A, I guess.
It's not my favorite.
It's not my favorite.
I did admit to Amanda, I had to read it a couple of times. I don't think it would be bad if it were just in there.
So.
I agree with it.
I think that, I I do think that what is awkward though, consisting of any one or combination of the following. And it's just one, a pledge of eligible securities as provided in general municipal law, which is provided in appendix A.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah, so we could just say uh by um shall be secured by eligible collateral consisting of.
A pledge of eligible securities as provided in general, so.
Oh, okay. There you go. And then maybe put that language.
Consisting of a pledge of, yeah, a pledge of eligible securities as provided in general municipal law.
Right.
Section ten, consisting of the following. Consist for consisting of any one or combination of the following.
But it's only one, right?
Well, no, it is, it's.
Oh, 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 okay.
And then we put in.
Actual appendix A.
Actual appendix A.
Yes.
So we eliminate uh eliminate appendix A but move everything up here.
Now, what what about this note? This is not a list of permitted investments, please see investment policy, section ten for permitted investments. This list is for purposes of illustration only. Governing boards in the exercise of their prudent discretion must determine which types of eligible securities offered by law. The list is permitted. Have we not been replacing governing boards with chief chief operations officer or just a broader governing board?
Well. So this is one where I actually did not touch it. Because this came directly from the general municipal law and the FDIC language, right?
Okay.
And so I, before making any changes to this, I didn't, I was not comfortable. Changing things to make it Ithacaized because I think that this is very standard.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that this is actually from the law itself, which is why it's probably an appendix, right?
Like maybe we should keep it in an appendix.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's fine by me, yeah, so we can just say, um so what we can say is shall be secured by eligible collateral.
Yeah. Yeah.
Consisting of all deposits in excess of this amount, right? And then we can just say perhaps a a pledge of eligible securities as provided in blah blah blah. Um which is provided in appendix A and we can maybe use that consisting of, right? That that language from the top part in that, in that, I'll I'll fix it, I will fix it.
Yes. Okay, okay. Securing deposits and investments. All deposits and investments at a bank or trust company, including all demand deposits. Certificates of deposit and special time deposits herein after collectively deposits. Made by officers of the district that are in excess of the amount insured under the provisions of the Federal Deposit Insurance Act. Including pursuant to a deposit placement program in accordance. With the law shall be secured by a. Okay, so next, this come, this comes to, we have several.
This is directly from, again, this is Alex's updates to.
Okay.
Our policy based on the way the law reads, right?
Okay.
And so um so obviously, the intention of that, right, is to talk about the different types of deposits. And then now we'll just refer to them once as deposits, right?
Okay.
And then um an outline of what this de- deposit placement program. Looks like for the district, which actually is prescribed by law, right?
Okay.
So that's where then we say number one is, if you notice underneath, it used to say here, an eligible irrevocable letter of credit. We own, it says a pledge of eligible securities with an aggregate market value as provided by New York state law. In appendix A, which is what, right?
Right.
That is at least equal to the aggregate amount of deposits by the officers. And then to see uh see schedule A of this policy. Uh for enlisting of eligible securities, so schedule A. We don't, I don't take, we don't have a schedule A here in this policy. So let me find out from Alex, what would that actually look like for schedule A?
Is it the same schedule A?
Schedule A is different from appendix A.
That's right.
Oh, schedule A, okay, this is appendix A, okay.
That's right. Yeah, so let me find out more about that one.
Okay. Okay, so that's number one. Number two is a pledge of a pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities. Having in the aggregate a market value at least el- equal to the aggregate amount of deposits from all such officers within New York state at the bank or trust company.
Again, taken right from the law and that's in addition.
An eligible, number three, an eligible surety bond payable to the government for an amount. At least equal to a hundred percent spelled out of the aggregate amount of deposits. And the agreed upon interest, if any, executed by an insurance company authorized to do business in New York state. Whose claims paying ability is rated in the highest rating category. That by by at least two nationally recognized statistical rating organizations. The governing board shall approve the terms and conditions of the surety bond.
Right, so again, this is all risk mitigation, right?
Mm-hmm. Four, an eligible letter of credit payable to the district as security for the payment of one hundred forty percent of the aggregate amount of deposits. And the agreed upon interest, if any. An eligible letter of credit shall be an irrevocable letter of credit issued in favor of the district. For a term not to exceed ninety days by a qualified bank other than the bank where the secured money is deposited. A qualified bank is either one whose commercial paper and other unsecured short term debt obligations. Or in the case of a bank which is the principal subsidiary of a holding company. Whose holding company's commercial paper and other unsecured short term debt obligations are rated in one of the three highest rating categories. By at least one nationally recognized statistical rating organization or one that is in compliance. With applicable federal minimum risk-based capital requirements.
And we can try to shorten that sentence.
It's killing Moira.
But. But I think this is quite standard when you look at investment policy.
I, you know, I I don't really wanna mess with investment policy language.
I, I think if our expert, if our consultant tells us this is my HP.
Yeah.
I would just let's, I think this is uh, he rewrote this for us.
Okay. One question. Ir- irrevocable or irrevocable?
I say irrevocable.
I knew it, I knew it. An irrevocable letter of credit. Pardon my earlier mistake, issued in.
How often you say?
Uh issued in favor of the district by a federal home loan bank whose commercial paper and other unsecured short term debt obligations. Are rated in the highest rating category by at least one nationally recognized statistical rating organization. As security for the payment of one hundred percent of the aggregate amount of deposits and the agreed upon interest, if any. As security for the payment of one hundred percent of the aggregate amount of deposits and the agreed upon interest, if any. So basically, almost all of this is new.
That's correct.
Right.
We were, I mean, the age of this policy shows.
Just like. I think of where I was in nineteen ninety seven.
Well, to me, if you think, I guess, you know, thinking about. The language around security.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Right, this is a vast improvement.
Yes, yes, this is, these are, these are long overdue, if I had known that we didn't have these, I might not have slept many nights today.
Hmm.
Ten, collateralization and safekeeping. Eligible securities used for collateralizing deposits made by officers of the district shall be held. By the depository or a third-party bank or trust company.
Something just.
I'm just wondering what the parentheses are doing there.
Yeah, I'm wondering that too.
Or a trust company subject to a security and to security and custodial agreements.
We can remove this, I'm looking at the policy that Alex sent me, I think it reads perfectly fine. I'm wondering if they did that because of the or or. But I I mean, the depository or a third-party bank, those are to describe the bank?
Yeah.
I mean, we can, you can also put it, you know, you can say shall be held by. Um. A bank that serves as the depository or a third party, or.
I just, I believe it.
Or just leave it?
I believe it.
Get rid of the.
Get rid of it? Got it.
Get rid of the parentheses.
Yes.
Okay.
And we no longer have an appendix B to go with this.
That's right, there's, that's eliminated, no more.
Eliminated. The security agreement shall provide that eligible securities or the pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities. Are being pledged to secure such deposits together with agreed upon interest, if any. And any costs or expenses arising out of the collection of such deposits upon default. It shall also provide the conditions under which the securities or pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities held. May be sold, presented for payment, substituted or released, and the events of default which will enable the local government. To exercise its rights against the pledged securities. In the event that the pledged securities are not registered or inscribed in the name of the district. Such securities shall be delivered in a form suitable for transfer. Or with an assignment in blank. To the district or the custodial bank or trust company. Whenever eligible securities delivered to the custodial bank or trust company are transferred by entries on the books of a federal reserve bank or other book entry system. Operated by federally federally regulated entity without physical delivery of the evidence of the obligations. Then the records of the custodial bank or trust company shall be required to show at all times. The interest of the local government in the securities or the pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities. As set forth in the security agreement.
Let's pause here a second.
Pause here.
Where the parentheses three times around, or the pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities. Do we need those parentheses?
We, according to the policy that I was sent, that is the addition. In our old policy, we only had securities.
Securities.
Uh securities.
Security.
And so, um again, I think that this is updating this language, I can double check with Alex to see if that is necessary, but. Because it is so repetitive.
Just the parentheses themselves. Yeah.
Right? I I don't think we need the parentheses, I think we can eliminate that, but I think we do need to state that or pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I, it's just.
Do you want us to eliminate the parentheses?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Yeah. 'Cause for one thing, the parentheses draw attention to the repetition.
Sure. Yep.
Would we add commas, securities comma or pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities comma as set forth in the security agreement?
Do I need those?
Yeah, commas are kind of less intrusive than parentheses.
The custodial agreement shall provide that pledged securities comma or the pro rata portion of a pool of eligible securities comma. Will be held by the custodial bank or trust company as the agent of. And custodian for the district. Comma, will be kept separate and apart from the general assets of the custodial bank or trust company. And will not be commingled with or become part of the backing of any other deposit or other bank liability. The agreement shall also describe how the custodian shall confirm. The receipt substitution or release of the collateral and it shall provide. For the frequency of reevaluation of collateral by the custodial bank or trust company. And for revaluation of collateral by the custodial bank or trust company. And for the substitution of collateral when a change in the rating of a security causes ineligibility. The security and custodial agreement shall also include all other provisions necessary to provide the district. With a perfected security interest in the eligible securities and to otherwise secure the local government's interest in the collateral. And may contain other provisions that the governing board deems necessary. This is okay to me?
Yeah.
It is obtuse and I'm not ready to touch it.
Helped security. Yes, and if you do have, you do have questions, we can have Alex join us.
I get the gist of it.
I do too, I mean, right, it's.
I'm just not gonna wordsmith it.
No, not worth it, nope, nope.
Right, right. That's right.
Okay, permitted investments. As authorized by general municipal law section eleven, the district authorizes the chief operations officer. To invest monies not required for immediate expenditure for terms not to exceed its projected cash flow needs. In the following types of invest investments. One, special timed. Time deposit counts in or certificates of deposit issued by a bank or trust company. Located and authorized to do business in New York State. Two, through a deposit placement program certificates of deposit in one or more banking institutions. As defined in banking law section nine R. Three, obligations of the United States of America. Four, obligations guaranteed by agencies of the United States of America where the payment of principal and interest are guaranteed by the United States of America. Five, obligations of the state.
You can say of New York, but it is, they mean the state in which we're in.
I don't have a preference.
Okay.
Six, with the approval of the state comptroller, obligations issued pursuant to local finance law section twenty four point oh oh or twenty five point oh oh. Ie, tax anticipation notes and revenue anticipation notes. By any municipality, school district or district corporation in the state other than the district. And then we are striking out many types of.
I'm sorry.
All investment obligations shall be payer or payable or redeemable at the option of the district within such times as the proceeds will be needed to meet expenditures. For purposes for which the monies were provided and in the case of obligations purchased. The proceeds of bonds or notes shall be payable or redeemable in any event. At the option of the district within two years of the date of purchase. Time deposit accounts and certificates of deposit. Shall be payable within such times as the proceeds will be needed to meet expenditures for which the monies. This is money spelled in the other.
Oh, wait, oh. Monies, got it.
Were obtained and shall be secured as provided in sections nine and ten herein. Which we've just. Previously gone through.
We did, yep.
And there is no, we're striking out authorized financial institutions.
It, you'll see, it actually, that, it was there, it was located there, it's actually down here because there's more, this, except as may may otherwise be.
Time. Okay.
That was also needed to be added to keep up with uh general municipal law section, municipal law section eleven.
Okay. Except as may otherwise be provided in a contract with bondholders or note holders, any monies of the district. Authorized to be invested may be commingled for investment purposes, provided that any investment of commingled monies. Shall be payable or redeemable at the option of the district. Within such time as the proceeds shall be needed to meet expenditures for which such monies were obtained. Or as otherwise specifically provided in general municipal law section eleven. The separate identity of the sources of these funds shall be maintained at all times and income received shall be credited on a pro rata basis. For the fund, to the fund or account from which the monies were invested, any obligation that provides for the adjustment. Adjustment of its interest rate on set dates. Is deemed to be payable or redeemable on the date on which the principal amount can be recovered through demand by the holder.
So. Emily Scheit's treasure report and wind count tracks all of this, essentially what you just read. Emily, whenever we bring in any kind of, they mentioned like TANs and RAMs, tax anticipation notes, revenue anticipation notes. We actually have not, those are things that you would get when you are struggling to make a payment, like to make payroll, right? You'd actually secure a short-term note to be able to make that payroll and then you pay that back once your taxes come in, right, or your new revenue comes in. We actually don't practice that, we actually um really watch our cash flow and we haven't had to secure a TAN or a RAM in my tenure here. Um the other thing that is, that is added that I want to, that part that starts with except and ends with demand by a holder. Is essentially that's saying that you can commingle funds, right, so for example, you might have monies that are coming in for the capital fund, you might have monies that are from the general fund, you might have monies from the school lunch fund. To leverage perhaps, um you know, interest rates, you might be able to put those together to buy, uh you know, um a note. And so that, those could be commingled, but Emily has to track those, right, so depending on whatever portion where those monies came from. She would be tracking any interest that was gained to stay within those funds, right, so you can commingle, but you have to track by fund. That's what that said, if I can make it in plain language.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, that actually clarifies a great deal.
Great.
Twelve, authorized financial institutions and dealers, all financial institutions and dealers with which the district transacts business shall be creditworthy. And have an appropriate level of experience, capitalization, capitalization size and other factors. That make the chief financial, that makes the financial institution or the dealer capable and qualified to transact business with the district.
Pause. Uh the comma before and is not.
Size, between size and and?
Between creditworthy and and.
Ah, creditworthy. And then size, yes, cuz that's, okay, got it, thanks, honey.
The chief operations officer shall evaluate the financial position and maintain a listing of proposed depositories. Trading partners and custodians, recent reports of condition and income, call reports shall be obtained for the proposed banks. For proposed banks and security. Banks, no comma there, banks and security dealers that are not affiliated with a, oh wait, no, proposed banks should be comma. And security dealers that are not affiliated with a bank shall be required to be classified as reporting dealers. Affiliated with the Federal Reserve Bank as primary dealers. The district shall maintain a list of financial institutions and dealers approved for investment purposes. And establish appropriate limits to the amounts of investment that can be made with each financial institution or dealer.
Mm-hmm.
We are not, we are not going to. Add a list as an appendix, okay.
No, I think this, again, this is that annual meeting utilization, right?
Okay. Purchase of investments, the chief operations officer is authorized to contract for the purchase of investments. Directly from an authorized trading partner. One, by participation in a cooperative investment agreement with other authorized municipal corporations pursuant to article five G of the general municipal law. And in accordance with article three A of the general municipal law.
Pat, there's an error there, so it should read that, right, the chief, the chief operations officer is authorized to, okay. Number one, directly from an authorized trading partner. Or number two, by participation in a cooperative, that did not translate the goal.
Tough. Oh, okay.
Okay, so by participation is number two.
Okay, so we're changing that intended one to two.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, and do, would you like me to under, directly from an authorized trading partner and or? Um or just list them? Can I just do directly and then by participation without anything at the end of that first sentence, okay, great, perfect, okay.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Great.
All purchased obligations unless registered or inscribed in the name of the local government shall be purchased through, delivered to and held in the custody of a bank or trust company. Such obligations shall be purchased, sold or presented for redemption or payment by such bank or trust company. Only in accordance with prior written authorization from the officer authorized to make the investment. All such transactions shall be confirmed in writing to the district by the bank or trust company. What is this?
Now, thirteen, hold on. This should not be thirteen. This should just say, and again, I'm not sure why in my policy here it's not showing up that way, so. I must have shared it in a manner that was really ugly, so it should just continue to the next paragraph.
Okay, new.
Reading any obligation.
New paragraph, any obligation held in the custody of a bank or trust company shall be held pursuant to a written custodial agreement. As described in general municipal law section ten. Ten three A?
So.
Or is that something else?
So it's it's ten paren three paren A.
Okay. The agreement shall provide that securities held by the bank or trust company as agent of. And custodian for. The district will be kept separate and apart from the general assets of the custodial bank or trust company. And will not be commingled with or become part of the backing of any other deposit or other bank liability.
Mm-hmm.
The agreement shall also describe how the custodian shall confirm the receipt and release of the securities. Such such agreement shall include all provisions necessary to secure the local government's perfected interest in the securities. And the agreement may also contain other provisions that the governing board deems necessary. The security and custodial agreement shall also include all other provisions necessary. To provide the district with a perfected interest in the securities.
That's right, and then you have to go to the next page for the final paragraph. Of this section which begins the chief operations officer where authorized, that's actually the last paragraph.
The chief. The chief operations officer where authorized can direct the bank or trust company to register and hold the evidences of investments in the name of its nominee. Or may deposit or authorize the bank or trust company to deposit or arrange for the deposit. Of any such evidences of investments with a federal reserve bank or other book entry transfer system. Operated by a federally regulated entity. The records of the bank or trust company shall show at all times the ownership of such evidences of investments. And they shall be, when held in the possession of the bank or trust company at all times, kept separate from the assets of the bank or trust company. All evidences of investment delivered to a bank or trust company shall be held by the bank or trust company. Pursuant to a written custodial agreement as set forth in general municipal law section ten three A. Pres- uh and as described earlier in the section. When any such evidences of investments are so registered in the name of a nominee, the bank or trust company shall be absolutely liable for any loss. Occasion by the acts of such nominee with respect to such evidences of investments.
Say it. Very last part of this is the definitions before the appendix.
The terms public funds, public deposits, bank, trust company, eligible securities, eligible surety bond. And eligible letter of credit shall have the same meanings as set forth in general municipal law section ten.
That's right. That's right. And then it's appendix A, and then there is, it's like, you know, the overview of schedule, right?
Right.
And with the note.
I would say this definitely kind of brings home the weighty responsibility of managing the public funds of the district and thank you Angela and Emily and everyone who aids us in this undertaking.
Indeed.
It's amazing, yes. All right, I will make edits, I will get back to Tricia.
Okay.
I will follow up with finance committee on the couple of items that we discussed. Thank you, Pat. For reading Brutus, thank you Moira for the attention to these policies.
That was impressive, Shaw, took a meeting to miss, right?
I mean, they just get better. I just want to say. Six thousand series, it's pretty amazing.
All right.
At times like these, I regret becoming a medieval historian instead of a financial advisor. Actually, many times that happens, but usually, usually around the missions time when I see what everybody's mom and dad does since you send your kids to Cornell without financially.
Without financially.
Without financially.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would love to see your top ten list of some of those things at some point, like one of being people who
Hedge fund. Hedge fund advisor. That's one, and I'll run again for you this year, Dr. Van.
Please, help me out, yeah. Hedge fund, that's a long way from my Robinhood account.
Don't go there. Uh, let's see, where are we now?
Oh.
And we have um, you guys, policy, oh, policy twenty-three fifty, board meeting procedures. We were going to have a discussion about order. Uh, Moira and I were chatting informally before the meeting started or at the beginning of the meeting. And we would like to defer this, uh, this, um, subject to a meeting of the full policy committee rather than just the two of us.
Right.
So we would like to table this or, or move it to next month's agenda. Action items, I think we have assigned, all the action items have been assigned to Amanda. Agenda setting for next meetings. We have a, we have a partial, Amanda, if you would like to give us any more six thousand series.
I, I'm excited for that, whoever, thank you.
In the absence of any further business, we will close the policy work session and give people a ten minute break until human resources.